This appeal is signed by Matt Belovich. Sorry. We also have petition number 2020-10. This is to the Honorable Members of the Common Council of Michigan, Michigan. This is to rezone from I-1 Heavy Industrial to R-1 Single Family Residential to allow addition to garage on property with an existing single-family house at 3706 York Street. This is signed by Kenneth and Marcy Bergner. Petition number 2020-11 to the Honorable Members of the Common Council of Michigan, Michigan, Indiana. This is a petition for annexation and zoning classification. This is to annex a zone to C-1 General Commercial for future medical offices at 16813 Douglas Road. This is signed by Wayne Wallace, property owner. Petition number 2020-12. This is to the Honorable Members of the Common Council of Michigan, Michigan. It's a PUD amendment to allow for mixed-use development to residential, commercial, and industrial use vacant land south of Vestula Road and west of Cedar Road. This petition is signed by Lake City Bank Jennifer King, Vice President and Trust Officer. We also have a presentation to the Council of Encumbered Funds. This is required by state law. The Controller must just present this to the Council. No action is required.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the Council with regard to the presentation of encumbered funds? If not, thank you, Mrs. Miller, for putting that together and providing us with the information. We have no report of special committees, so we will move into ordinances on first reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-17, an ordinance transferring funds from the Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund of the City of Michigan to the local Road and Bridge Matching Grant Fund of the City of Michigan for the calendar year ending December 31, 2020, and in ordinance appropriating additional funds for the year ending December 31, 2020. Excuse me. This is transferring funds and additional appropriation Motor Vehicle Highway Restricted Fund in the amount of $427,150 and additional funds in the amount of $854,300.
Thank you. Proposed ordinance number 2020-17 will be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-18, an ordinance declaring an emergency and determining the expenditure of additional funds for the year ending December 31, 2020. This is additional appropriation to various departments in the amount of $117,208.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-18 will also be assigned to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolutions.
Resolution R. 2020-11, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Michigan, Indiana, establishing a revolving fund pursuant to Indiana Code 5-1-14, authorizing a COVID-19 loan program under such revolving fund and certain related matters.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on proposed resolution 2020-11. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, Members of the Council, Ken Prince, City Planner. We've had multiple discussions on this, so I will try to encapsulate everything but yet be brief at the same time. So, under the direction of Mayor Wood, I have been asked to lead the recovery efforts for the city. What we've worked out is what amounts to a three-legged stool of programs for the city that deals specifically in terms of helping with the recovery from the COVID crisis. The first is that we received $282,000 of federal funds. These were allocated through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And those funds, the federal government has waived the requirement. If you're familiar with the program, usually a maximum of 15% of those funds can go to our sub-receipients. In this case, they waived that requirement and all of it can go to our sub-receipients. So, we, working through the Redevelopment Commission, have made the conscious decision to allocate it to all our social safety net organizations. So, portions of that funding, a large portion, went to real services, not only to help with food, but also to help with utility expenses that people are encountering as a result. Again, these are all income-qualified, so this is meant to deal with low-income individuals who are not capable of handling the expenses where the crisis on various levels. $30,000 to the food pantry, the YWCA, School City for the food program. Again, all these funds have gone to the social safety net programs. The second leg of this stool is what we're here to talk about tonight, and that is the small-business loan program. In trying to address the crisis, and we've had, through the committee, we've had extensive discussions on this, but we had to figure out a way, how do we come up with funds not knowing our own financial situation, as was discussed earlier in this evening, of providing funding for small businesses to help them, if you will, get over the hump that is associated with the COVID crisis. This is only meant for small businesses. There's not a whole lot the city can do for any business of some size, but there's a lot of mom-and-pops out there who honestly are on a very thin line, and the idea was to try to get help to those specific businesses where we could. So, in terms of providing funding for the program, again, working through the Redevelopment Commission and specifically working with Barnes &amp; Thornburg, our legal consultants, Baker Tilly, our financial analysis, Rebecca Miller, our controller, and obviously Mayor Wood, we came up with the idea that was floated regarding the reimbursement of tax increment financing funds into the EBITDA line to fund the program. What we struggle with is tax increment financing funds are specifically meant only for infrastructure improvements. So, in this case, Barnes &amp; Thornburg, when they were reviewing our expenditures, identified a couple of projects or purchases that would be considered TIF-eligible. Usually, when we approach the TIF program, we are very conservative in how those funds are expended, rightfully so. But in this case, our Twin Branch Park improvements, Twin Branch Park is not directly located in the Tax Agreement Finance District, but Lincoln Way, which runs immediately adjacent to the park, is located within the Tax Agreement Financing District. From Barnes &amp; Thornburg's perspective, given the extenuating circumstances of the crisis, they felt it was completely justifiable to reimburse the city through the tax agreement financing funds to allow for the loan program to happen. In addition to that, we asked them to modify or to address any potential project or item that could be refunded as part of the program. We looked at this as essentially a one-time refunding of tax agreement financing funds, and with that, they also identified a sweeper that is used to clean the Riverwalk as eligible for refunding. So, this provided a little over $900,000 of funds that would be refunded to the EBITDA to allow for the loan program. In this case, the loan program that we're talking about is a half million dollars. We're looking at $500,000 worth of monies available for loans. That provides potential help to 50 businesses. We are looking at a cap of $10,000 as a maximum per business. The terms of it would be, the first six months, no payment required, and the remaining balance of the loan, whatever you would take out, be payable over the next 18 months. So, we're talking about a relatively short-term refunding program of it, but again, the idea of this is not to fund some long-term capital investment of real estate investment. The idea is to refund the capital needs that these businesses need, whether it's utility expenses, salary expenses, the cost of running a business that has been shut off because of the COVID crisis. So, as part of the program, we needed somebody to run it. We looked at doing it internally, but to us, that didn't make sense. Our, the current lending institution that the city uses is Lake City Bank, and they've really stepped up to the table to help us. They've provided input into the program and have also identified that they would be willing to handle the administrative side of it as well. So, as part of that, the cap on that, one of the items that was brought up at the Budget and Finance Meeting was to identify what that specific cap was. They've identified it at 3%. If you recall, the last meeting, I had it blocked out, not knowing what that expense was at 10%, so again, that's significantly less. And what we're looking at is $15,000 in cost for a $500,000 loan program, which we think is completely reasonable, given the size of the loan is relatively small and the expense involved. So, with that, Mr. President, I do want to walk through just the eligibility requirements very quickly, and then I'll answer any questions that you might have. To be eligible for the program, the company or business must be located in the city of Michigan. They must certify that the economic condition or that the need for the loan is based on the COVID-19 pandemic. We've also required a written paragraph. That was one of the suggestions made by the Council as part of the committee meeting, so we can identify specifically what those impacts are. They must identify that they believe these funds are necessary to keep their business in business during the time. Under item number four, they must have been in business and operational since February 15, 2020. Again, this is a date that we used from the previous federal programs that were awarded, and we thought that date made sense. In terms of identifying what is a small business, we've identified that the maximum annual revenues is not in excess of $2 million per year, and really, we looked at the restaurants, specifically, might run into that category. A good mom-and-pop business that runs significant business might run up into that range. When you get above that range, you're probably not looking at a $10,000 loan as being significant assistance anyway. Under number six, we basically adopted the Small Business Association's loan requirements that you, in terms of a definition of eligible applicants. Under number seven, and this is with the direction of the Council at the Budget and Finance, we've also included charitable organizations, not-for-profits, service clubs, lodges, fraternal organizations. They would be eligible only if they have a business address and a commercial storefront and server or are accessible to the public. At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, you recall that one of the issues we brought up, we were talking about including theater groups, because a theater group had reached out to us, and then we looked at not-for-profits, and Councilwoman Volker brought up that, the first one she brought up was a barber shop quartet. And so, how do we distinguish who is eligible and who is not? And I think the intent of this program is really for those that have commercial storefronts, and what we didn't want to do is to vary and make a decision. If a barber shop quartet has a storefront, they would be eligible for this program, as it's currently written. So, we wanted to make sure that it was based on the foundation of need, and we think part of that need is having a commercial address and the costs and expenses that are incurred by that. Under item number eight, the applicant must indicate if they've received money from either the Paycheck Protection Program, PPP, or the Economic Disaster Loan Program. The idea is that we'll provide a two-week period of time. Those that were not eligible for those programs would be the first in line for this program. After that two weeks, it would be eligible for everyone after that point. We don't know what the interest is going to be, but if we have 50 people step up that weren't eligible for the other programs, or 50 businesses, I should say, that money could go very quickly, or it could be over an extended period of time. And lastly, the last condition of eligibility dealt with the credit score of the person. So, 620 was what was the number that was recommended by Lake City. This is kind of the borderline average of, in terms of, the idea is to protect the city's investment, the taxpayer money, but yet, we understand that the people that are, might be in the most need, might have marginal credit. We asked Lake City specifically, how do we walk that fine line of not being foolish with the city money and yet still providing funds to those that need it? And that was the score that they identified as being appropriate. So, with that, that kind of summarizes the program and what is looking to be done. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Prince? Mr. Emmons.
Yes. Mr. Prince, you said that it's interest-free, and they start paying back after the first six months.
That's correct.
Okay. And you said it was six months, they had to pay it back within six months?
No, no. So, the first, it's a 24-month loan.
Oh, okay.
During the first six months, there is no payment required, and then the balance of the loan, so if it would be $10,000, it would be 18 equal payments to pay off that $10,000.
What would happen, heaven forbid, if there was a recurrence of it and everything was shut down? Then, is there an extension for the payment?
I think as a city, we would need to re-approach the issue with Lake City Bank and adopt, very much similar to this, we would have to adopt a special provision to deal with the crisis at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Belovich. Yes. So, Mr. Prince, if a borrower wanted to participate in a program, but they only needed $8,000, there would be no requirement to go all the way to 10, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Prince, for the presentation and your efforts to help small businesses in the city, so I appreciate that. Couple of questions for you. Mr. Belovich just kind of picked up a, or picking up off a question that he mentioned. So, if a company only needed $8,000, could potentially another company request 12?
So, right now, we have a cap to $10,000 as the maximum.
And then, the other question that I have is, once the potential borrower applies for the loan, how soon would he or she receive the funds?
So, right now, as was talked about in the pre-meeting, is we've asked for an additional, or additional funds to be added in terms of the movement of funds. So, essentially, the administrative fees, when we drafted the ordinance originally, we only had it at $500,000 with the administrative fees. That would be $515,000. So, because of that ordinance needing to take place, Lake City indicated that it would be a week to 10 days for them to finalize on their behalf, so we're hopeful very much in the middle of June that these funds will be available. And as we know more, we will get that advertised and out. The other thing we don't want to do is we don't want to advertise until it's actually approved, so we'll wait until after the next council meeting, hopefully, it'll be approved, and we'll get it out from there. But hopefully, before July, these funds will be available.
Thank you. My last question, I think I had asked at last meeting regarding the credit score, and I think you clarified it a little bit this evening with the credit score of 620. And my question last week was, what if a business had a credit score of 800 prior to COVID, and then, once COVID hit, they got behind in bills and the credit score has fallen? Would that be taken in any consideration, or is it?
No. So, essentially, if it's below 620 at that point, it'd be deemed unworthy, and they would not have it available to them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Prince? Mrs. Volker.
Thank you. It's kind of a silly question, but the barber shop quartet comment made me think of this. Do, how do they say that they have to, the guidelines say that the company has to have a business address in February 2020?
We did not define that specifically, and I think, I think that's one of the things that we'll have to deal with on a case-to-case basis, and I would say, I don't know if the situation exists, but what went through my head when you said that is they could have had one business address and moved to another business address. I don't think if they would have established a business address after that, that they would qualify, but if they had a previous one and then moved to one, I think they would, but we haven't identified that parameter within the qualifications. And I think some of this is to work through with Lake City as part of the administration on it.
Other questions for Mr. Prince?
Mr. Prince, follow up to, well, first of all, before I even get into questions, I want to echo Mr. Mamalenti's comments. Thank you for the work that you and the mayor and the controller and others have done to put this together so quickly under difficult circumstances, and it sounds like we had great support by our outside consultants, including Lake City as well, so please pass that along to them as well, if you would.
You will.
To piggyback on Mr. Mamalenti's question with regard to credit scores and to really focus on those nonprofits that we've touched on, as I read criteria number nine, for a nonprofit that wouldn't have a principal owner associated with it, there's an equivalent analysis of their creditworthiness that they can undergo that would qualify them or disqualify them, as the case may be for the loan program. Is that?
That is correct.
Okay. At the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, and by the way, thank you for the work that you did to make some revisions after that meeting. It's very much appreciated by all the Council, I'm sure, but we spent some time at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting talking about the relationship between this program and potentially the CARES Act money that we'll be receiving, we hope, at some point in time from the state of Indiana. Can you touch on that a little bit and how that might intersect with this loan program?
So, and this is, this is beyond my expertise, but if I get too deep, Becky will come up here and rescue me, I'm sure. Our controller, Becky Miller, believes that these funds will be refundable through the program. I do not know how that's going to work, or ultimately, if it's going to be eligible, but I know from her reading of that, of the monies and what would be eligible, that these funds could be eligible for reimbursement as part of the program.
So, really, in essence, it gives us two opportunities for the money to come back into the control of the city, repayment by the individual borrowers, and then possible replenishment through the CARES Act, once we work through that complicated federal process.
Well, one of the reasons I didn't even bring it up is because if I think, if we're loaning the money and then we're getting the money back, I'm not sure if it's going to be reimbursable or not, kind of a double-dip scenario, so I think it requires more investigation and assurance before I would present anything like that.
But it's an open question, and we are going to pursue it to see if possibly it could be tied into this. Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here in the chamber who wishes to speak with regard to the proposed resolution? If so, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating electronically in the meeting who wishes to speak in favor of the proposed resolution? If you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, is there anyone in the chamber who wishes to speak against the proposed resolution? And then, I'll extend the same offer to anyone participating telephonically. If you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record, if you wish to speak in opposition. Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? Mr. Hazen.
I would just want to say, thank you, great job. I know you've considered all of our input, took it into it, all the different components. I think you did a pretty good job in a short amount of time, put a pretty good program together, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hazen. Any other questions or comments? If not, then I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the Council?
Mrs. DeMay?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hickson?
Yes.
Resolution passes 920.
Thank you. Ordinances on second reading.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-12, an ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michigan, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the Zoning Ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michigan, Indiana. This is to rezone from C-1 General Commercial, C-5 Neighborhood Commercial Lands, I-2 Heavy Industrial, to R-3 Family Residential, 1215 and 1225 East Jefferson.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the Common Council of the City of Michigan, your committee on land use planning, to whom was deferred the matter of proposed ordinance 20-12, reported that they have examined said matter, and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-12. Anyone wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Greg Sharon, Dan Charner Associates, 1643 Commerce Drive, South Penn, Indiana, 46628. Here tonight, representing the property owners, Mark and Deborah Cam. They are requesting to rezone 1215 and 1222 East Jefferson from C-1 General Commercial, C-5 Neighborhood Commercial, and I-1 Heavy Industrial to R-3 Multi-Family Residential. The property owners, obviously, own the property right now. What they intend to do is sell the property to the adjacent VFW, and they would like to put seven small residential units on there for housing for veterans. The housing units will be approximately 400 to 500 square feet. They'll be, they won't be trailer-type residence. They'll be, you know, stick-built homes, nicely constructed homes, nice landscaping around them. We will go through the site plan process and get the property platted. I have here tonight, too, Jim Methard, who is with the VFW, that would like to say something about the organization and a little more about the project and how it's going to be run and everything, so.
Why don't we defer on that, and let's see if we have any questions from the Council first. Are there any questions for the petitioner at this time? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, if you would, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Jim Methard, 10291 Charles Street, Osceola, Indiana. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of what has been a dream of mine, honestly. I'm president of Get Wet for a Vet, where a local nonprofit agency, in the first seven years of our existence here in the area, we've raised over $225,000, of which every penny has went back to Michiana veterans. That's something we're very proud of. Being a disabled combat veteran myself, I absolutely praise the Robert Miller Veterans Center for what they've done in the community, but to provide a sense of personal accomplishment and ownership to the veterans that need a helping hand is my main goal. The space that is directly to the west of the VFW is just, is perfect in every scenario. Like Greg said, we'll initially, we'll have six to eight tiny homes. We'll also have area for a garden that the veterans themselves will maintain. We'll also have a gathering area, so to speak, with a fire pit, service flags surrounding that, but one of the unique things that we're going to do is we're going to allow community members to sponsor bricks on behalf of friends and loved ones with the mindset that it will help sustain the, you know, revenue needed. I have a board of directors developed with area business people that also include two veterans, one retired Air Force Navy veteran, that will create bylaws, that will create the policies and things. It was difficult to go too far on this before everything was approved. We have unofficially many community businesses that are very excited, very excited in donating goods, services, labor, and it's just a great opportunity to have something like this in the area. I welcome any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the Council? Mrs. Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, thank you. Thanks to you again. So, I was wondering about the timeline, and maybe you mentioned it before, but if this were approved tonight, how long would it take for you to break ground?
My goal would be, I think we have a pretty aggressive, I don't want to say sponsored by any means, but Jack Champagne really wants, he's bought off on my passion to make this happen. If I had to say a timeline, our annual event is always the first Saturday of August, so for this year's purposes, it would be very nice, and observing the restrictions we have with the COVID-19, to be able to at least announce it and get the excitement going, maybe even begin a GoFundMe for various fundraisers. Currently, as a matter of fact, the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Cam, they just, they've been great in everything that we've presented to them. Spine and Joint Associates actually has a veggies-for-vets program that last year, they made a garden in Niles. That's a little bit outside of the area immediately in the Michiana, so the current owners are, they're probably going to be breaking ground here this week for a very, very large community garden for the veterans to get some fresh produce along with their garden for the veterans to get some fresh produce along with their food pantry. I would love to see the ground leveled, the trees down, possibly even the buildings removed this calendar year, ma'am, and break ground next spring.
I have one other question. In your presentation, I think this is the zoning board.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about some services that you're going to have available for the vets.
Yes, ma'am. I've already have a commitment from the local VA center that will do weekly wellness checks. I also have a commitment from Spine and Joint, where Spine and Joint, there's a lot of veterans that utilize that facility for, whether it be acupuncture or therapeutic massage. They're going to also make weekly house calls to that facility. My organization, Get Wet for a Vet, as well as I have another nonprofit Combat Veterans Motorcycle Association, as well as the VFW, everyone is in tune with making wellness checks and such. We, when we determine the bylaws and when we look at eligibility and things, we may appoint some sort of a caretaker for the, for the property itself. But one of the areas also that we are going to enter into the bylaws is that each one of the residents have some sort of community involvement. I don't want to say community service, but lack of better terms, out there into the, out there to the community. That's, at this point right now, that's the only services. The organization co-sponsored the DAV van two years ago, so I like to believe that we have that at our beck and call if any of the veterans need to be transported either to Fort Wayne, Marion, or Indianapolis VA centers.
And the proximity to the public, or up to...
Yes, ma'am. You're very welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Mamalenti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mather, for your presentation, your passion, and more importantly, thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
What question you brought up, eligibility, if you could expound on that in terms of what, what they may need to qualify in order to receive a home?
You know, it's kind of mixed emotions right now. I, I want to defer to when we are able to develop the board of directors. There wouldn't need to be, the veteran wouldn't need to be on any sort of disability. Certainly, my immediate target would be looking at the Miller's Veterans Center to see what veterans, veterans are there and what needs they have necessary. The last thing that I would like to see, that I would hate to see is some sort of a sense of a handout. That's not what I want to accomplish here. I want to accomplish the veteran being able to provide for themselves that stepping stone, whether it be a short term or a long term. So to answer your question, sir, I, I don't have an answer for it right now.
I appreciate that, and I, I believe that there's some similar programs throughout the U.S.?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And have you been in contact with them in terms of...
I have not.
...cons or what's been successful, what has not?
There's, so much of my hesitation has been that even though so many people in the community that I've spoke to has said that it's a no-brainer, and my goodness, you know, you should be able to count on moving forward with this, I didn't want to jinx myself. I didn't want, I didn't want to talk so much and somehow got back to the common council and, and someone say, my goodness, this hasn't even been approved, and he's making these plans. Unofficially, though, sir, I've had so many people I've spoke to talking about so many grants, there's so many, there's so many possibilities out there. I know that there is one in Kansas City that is very, very well-run and very well-maintained. To my knowledge, I don't believe we have any in the state of Indiana at all. So to be on that cutting edge, this, it's not about bragging rights, it's about providing for our veterans.
Well, if it gets approved tonight, I have no doubt that it will be very successful, given your passion, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions? If I can follow up on Mr. Mamalenti's question, which seems to be a theme this evening, I can appreciate the fact that you haven't fully flushed out all the eligibility criterion. But the reality is that we're being presented with an item to vote on this evening.
Yes, sir.
That would implant your project in a residential neighborhood. So is there anything else that you can tell us about how someone who lives in close proximity to this site could have some peace of mind with regard to this being a positive addition to the neighborhood as, as opposed to any type of problem?
Absolutely, sir. We would verify service connected with the DD 214, which is pretty much the Bible of your service records. Sometimes you have to say no, and if there is, and I'm not going on record by any means by saying that, but if there are certain things that you have had, you know, dishonorably discharged or since, or something along that sense, we might have to really look deeply into that. I believe that we would want to verify the income, we would want to look at taxes, we would want to be able to involve Kevin Pilchheimer, the area VSO, to provide, if they would like to be considered for this, they've got to be open and sharing the things with us. They're going to be professionally built homes, it's going to be, I was, I had hoped that the, the slide was up that we had the last zoning that just shows what we are proposing. It's a very attractive setting with the seven or eight buildings, and...
I can show them. Why don't you start right, right there at the end? Yeah.
So while that's being passed around, is it, is it a fair statement, then, that even though you don't have the criterion spelled out in detail this evening, that there are going to be some criterion that we're going to help you to ensure that the people who live in these homes are appropriate to live in a residential neighborhood in close proximity to?
Absolutely. Absolutely, sir.
You know, I also appreciated your reference to a caretaker potentially being identified and secured for the property. Can we follow up on that a little bit more, though, and talk about the ongoing involvement in the VFW with regard to oversight of this, so that problems don't emanate out into the neighborhood as a result of this development?
Yes, sir. The VFW currently is open six days a week. Every other week, they're open the seventh day on Sunday as well. It's, I've got the verbal commitment from that post commander. Will he be commander the next year? I'm not certain, sir. I'm not certain about that. But we have a verbal commitment, because they have their own chain of officers within the VFW itself. So they're, they're going to tax, task not only them, but as well as the VFW auxiliary to make numerous wellness checks, wellness checks weekly. And there are so many patrons that frequent that facility, and I think up until 10 o'clock at night, I believe, is open, sir, that there will be so many people that are visible, and there will be so many checks going on. It won't, there won't be any, it won't be tolerated, it won't, it's not going to be strict like we're back in the military or anything, but it's, it's, it's going to be ran accordingly, and it's going to be maintained accordingly. Our organization is going to be here forever. We're, we're proud of what we've done in the community, and we plan on continuing doing that, and this is something that we have wanted to see for a long time.
And that all sounds good, although if I was a neighbor, I think I would want to have one point of contact, and that may be that caretaker that you referenced earlier. It, it's good to have a lot of people that you can reach out to, but, you know, sooner or later, you don't want to run around and have to call everybody, so having that one point of contact for the neighborhood, I think, would be valuable. And then if I recall the staff report, there is going to be a provision made for additional parking in the VFW lot if this is approved, so that there should be very little, if any, need for the residents to have to park anywhere off-site as they're residing in.
Correct. Right now, the plan is eight to 10. I, eight to 10 spots that will be directly on the west entrance of the VFW, to where there won't be any need for any breaking or any additional entrances.
Okay. And final question for me, with regard to the community support that you're soliciting, is it going to also involve some fundraising so that once these are constructed, that there will be adequate funding available to be, to maintain them and to take care of the property over time, so that it, it won't look good on day one and then start to deteriorate thereafter?
Absolutely. We'll set up a specific nonprofit for that, so we can have its own funding available, and there'll be a treasurer, there'll, there'll be everyone to maintain it. Truly, my goal is that all the money that's going to be raised and earned for the project will go into the account for a rainy day. It's easy to sell your passion, it's easy to be a salesman when you're passionate about something. And I believe that next spring, my goal would be to have all the foundation's board and my organization put up, let's say, the first three buildings. I guarantee you that there will be so many, so many businesses in the community that will sponsor an entire house. That's, I think that when the entire project is done, it'll be fully paid for, and the annual funds that we raise off the bricks, as well as Get Wet for Vets, an annual event, will sustain it with no problem.
Great. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you, everyone, for the opportunity.
Thank you. Oh, one more question, sir?
Yes.
Mrs. DeMaye.
Hi.
Hi, there.
Thank you for coming in. I have a question. Is this going to be for single?
Yes.
Residents?
Yes.
Not family, not, and it's going to be for men and women?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. Currently, there's, to our knowledge, there's an ever-growing, ever-growing concern with female veterans homelessness, and it will be perfect for you to gender.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else here in the chambers who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed resolution? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address. Seeing no one, anyone participating electronically who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance, rather, if you would, please begin by unmuting your microphone and stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, if there is anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance, if you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address.
Mr. President, members?
I mainly got some questions.
Mike, could you start with your name and address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike Clotts, 1226 East Stanley, directly south of this. But I guess I should have asked him last time, but this was all new to me, so. But is, is there going to be room for a retention pond? Is, for 30 years, I fought water running through my garage, and, and thanks to Mike, he had some dry wells put in, but it's, they still struggle with the water running off Jefferson, and, but from my eye level, the Jefferson is, we're five feet going downhill. And they're going to build a wall? Is that going to be level? And it's, they're going to build it five feet off the alley? Alley's 20 foot, 20 foot wide, right?
Mm-hmm.
So they're going to go from that far and then, then five feet? So there's room to snowplow, get a lot of snow down there?
We, we can ask the architect to step back up and, and, and address those questions specifically, and then Mr. Prince may also may want to chime in on some of those issues, but is there anything else that you want to share with the council right now before we ask those follow-up questions?
No, I'm just, you know, it's, it's going to affect me most, so.
Okay.
No, I just had some questions. I want to know, I've been there 40 years.
Absolutely. Makes sense. Let's see if we have any questions from the council, from Mr. Clotts. Mr. Compton.
More of a comment, Mike. This could be a real good opportunity to fix that flooding permanently.
Yeah, yeah. If it's done right.
The problems there before were existing housing, and not much you could do about all that, but now this will be cleaned up and kind of start from new. So I think Mr. Hicksonbaugh makes a good point. We can talk to the architects and, and the developer there and ask them to consider that when, when that's being designed, and this, that could, as you, you bring up a good point, but as I sit and listen to you, this, this could be an opportunity that that could be fixed, hopefully permanently. Whether it's a retention pond, I don't know the mechanics of it, what it would take.
Well, he mentioned taking the trees out, so that's going to be more water now.
Could be.
Nothing to block it.
But I understand, I understand what you're saying, but this could, like I said, this could be a good opportunity to clean that all up and fix that.
Very well be. Just curious, I'm trying to pitch it in my mind's eye, what, when I look out my window, what I'm going to see?
Sure. Any other questions for Mr. Clotts? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the podium. Seeing no one, is there anyone participating telephonically who wishes to speak in opposition to this proposed ordinance? Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? I know I have some follow-up questions for the architect, if you wouldn't mind shedding some light on that for us? And as I understood, Mr. Clotts, his two questions had to do with water runoff and drainage, and then proximity to the alley.
Right.
Is that correct, Mr. Clotts? Okay, if you could address those, please.
Okay. If this is approved, the next stage that we will go through is the site plan phase, and it is required under the ordinance that we keep all water contained on site, and that means, you know, clearing up the drainage, so if there is a drainage problem there now, that will be an opportunity to clean that up. There probably won't be any sort of retention pond, it'll probably be underground storage, dry well with storm chambers, just given the area, and we haven't taken a look at the grade or surveyed it, but we do know that there's a significant drop-off or grade change along that rear, so there might be some sort of retaining wall system that is there. The buildings will be, there's a 10-foot building setback, and the way we have the units laid out now, they're approximately 15 feet from the property line, so there'll be plenty of distance away from the alleyway to address some of that concerns.
Thank you. Other questions from the council? And again, we recognize that we're not here to discuss the site plan tonight, but that's helpful at times to share that information as you're aware, so thank you for clarifying those issues. Any other questions or comments from the council? Thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Clotts, for your questions. This clearly is an exciting project, and the VFW has been a great community partner in Michilwaka for many years. This is a new venture, and I'm sure you can understand that Mr. Clotts's questions are reflective of those in the neighborhood. I understood you to commit this evening to be really good neighbors to the folks in close proximity to this, and I have no doubt about that, but if you can bear in mind that it'll be necessary for that commitment to, to carry forward, I think this is going to be a win-win for everybody involved in that neighborhood, so thank you for that. And if there are no other questions or comments from the council, I will call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaye?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaugh?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920. Proposed ordinance number 2020-13, and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michilwaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michilwaka, Indiana. This is a PUD amendment to allow quick-service oil changes as a use and reduction of parking spaces, setbacks in landscaping, 317 West Indian Ridge Boulevard, and the petitioner is requesting that this be postponed until the next regular meeting on June 15.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to postpone.
So moved.
Motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-13 until our next regularly scheduled council meeting of June 15, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, everybody's here.
Everybody's here.
I'm sorry.
Opposed? The opinion of the chair, the motion carries, the matter will be postponed until our next meeting. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-14 and ordinance annexing contiguous territory to the City of Michewaka, Indiana, providing zoning classification therefor. This is to annex and zone to C1 General Commercial, 52921, 52861, 52885, 52841, Fur Road. This is just the public hearing. No vote will be taken this evening.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. To the members of the common council of the City of Michewaka, Committee on Land Use Planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance number 2020-14, reports that they have examined said matter and that, in their opinion, it should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will then move into the public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-14. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Craig Sharon, Dan Charner Associates, 1623 Bowers Drive, South Bend, 46628. Here tonight representing RH Line LLC to annex and rezone four properties along the west side of Fur Road, annexed into the city and zoned to C1 General Commercial. Currently, there are, I think, four residents that are on the property. Right now, there are plans to demolish three of those residents. And if annexed and rezoned, there'll be a medical facility that will be developed towards the south of the site and a proposed retail facility that will be developed to the north of the site. And one of the residents will remain for an undetermined amount of time. The project will be done into phases. I believe the first phase will be the medical facility down towards the south of the property. We will go through, if rezoned and annexed, we will go through the site plan review process and meet all the city standards for site plan review.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sharon? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you. Just a quick one. I was just wondering, do you have a medical, health or healthcare business that is already interested in the site? Or is this?
Yes, I believe. Believe it is a dental, I'm sorry, dental facility. Don't quote me on that, but I believe that's, yeah.
No. Thank you. Other questions? Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the proposed ordinance? If you would, please come forward to the part, or come forward to the podium. But in this case, it looks like I'm gonna ask you to please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then we will close the public hearing on this proposed ordinance and setting the stage for final action to take place at our next regularly scheduled council meeting. Thank you.
Proposed ordinance number 2020-15 and ordinance amending Chapter 137 of the Municipal Code of the City of Michewaka, Indiana, as from time to time amended, commonly known as the zoning ordinance of 1966 of the City of Michewaka, Indiana. This is to rezone from I-1 Light Industrial to C3 City Center Commercial, 407 West Fourth Street.
Thank you. May we have the committee report, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Your Committee on Land Use Planning, to whom was referred the matter of proposed ordinance 2015, report to examine said matter and that, in their opinion, should be adopted. This is signed by the entire committee, and I move for its acceptance.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the committee report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will then move into the second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-15. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? If you would, please come forward to the microphone, or come forward to the podium and state your name and address for the record. In the alternative, if there is anyone participating telephonically who wishes to speak in favor of this proposed ordinance? If you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address. Is there anyone interested in speaking with regard to 407 West Fourth Street? If so, please unmute your microphone. Mr. Compton?
President, I make a motion that we postpone this until such time that someone comes forward and give us a little background on this.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public hearing on this matter indefinitely. Unless Mr. Compton wants to amend his motion to a date certain.
When they show up, they show up.
Motion has been made and seconded to postpone this matter indefinitely, pending notification to the petitioner of their opportunity to appear before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Proposed ordinance number 2020-16 and ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Michewaka, Indiana, transferring and appropriating $515,000 from the Seated Fund to the Seated Revolving Loan Fund in authorizing the use of said funds for the purpose of making loans under the COVID-19 Emergency Loan Program. Please forgive me, I'm reading what the amendment is requested to be. The actual proposed ordinance was for $500,000. It is requested that it be amended to add $15,000.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could, please state your name and if you could let us know which matter it is that you are asking to speak on.
My apologies to the Common Council. My name is Paul Mead. I'm at 50660 Stonington Drive, Granger, 46530. This is in regards to 2020-15. I was on the phone and I kept saying hello, hello, and you couldn't hear me. I don't know why.
Wonder so much.
I apologize profusely. I'm very sorry, very sorry. I meant no disrespect. I just couldn't get, you couldn't hear me.
It's perfectly understandable, sir. Thank you. If you can hold tight, please, we're gonna finish up the matter that's currently in front of us. And then, if there is, if it's the pleasure of the council to entertain a motion to add your public hearing back to the agenda this evening, then we'll be able to move forward with that. But so if you hold tight and mute your microphone for just a split second, we'll be back to you.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Which means that we are now back to proposed ordinance 2020-16. And if I recall where we're at, Madam Clerk was making reference to the fact that we have received a request to amend this proposed ordinance.
Yes, this is to add $15,000, $15,000 for administrative costs. And once that amendment does take place, if it does take place, we will have to have a, re-advertise it because it is additional funds. You can lower an additional funds request, but you cannot raise it without re-advertising it and holding a public hearing at the next meeting.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we amend 2020-16 to appropriate $515,000 from the funds.
A motion has been made and seconded to amend proposed ordinance number 2020-16, as was stated by the clerk. Mr. Prince, would you like to add anything to the explanation before we go to a vote?
No.
Then I'll call for the question. Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaum?
Yes.
The amendment passes 920.
Thank you. And then, as was referenced by the city clerk, in order to comply with the statutory requirements for an additional appropriation, we will defer, actually, we're gonna entertain a motion to postpone the public hearing on this matter until our next council meeting. Motion has been made and seconded to postpone the public hearing on proposed ordinance number 2020-16 in order to comply with the statutory requirement for publication of an additional appropriation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will take this matter back up on June 15. Thank you. With that, we have the lingering matter of proposed ordinance number 2020-15. Mr. Compton?
President, I make a motion that we add that back into the agenda with ordinance on second reading, item 2020-15.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to add proposed ordinance 2020-15 back to this evening's agenda for second reading and consideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, we will move back into second reading of public hearing on proposed ordinance 2020-15. The record will reflect that we have already received the committee report, so we will move into the public hearing portion of the proceedings. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-15? If you would, please unmute your microphone and begin by stating your name and address for the record.
Yes, this is Paul Mead. My address is 50660 Stonington Drive, Granger, 46530. And I'm with the M Group, and we own the building. It's a four-unit multifamily. And our understanding from the planning commission is that, based on the POC directories, it goes back as far as 1982 that the property was used as four apartments. And we'd like to rezone it to C3 City Center Commercial, which is more suited for that area, as many properties in the area are zoned C3, and also supports the use of single and multifamily residential properties. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Mead? Mrs. Volker?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mead, I just had a question. What precipitated you coming to the council to ask for this rezoning?
We went to refinance the property, and the zoning did not match the use. And we found out it was I-1 Light Industrial. So we wanted to get it corrected.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Mr. Mead? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you would, please mute your microphone once again, but stay on the line for any other questions that may come up, if you would, please. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of proposed ordinance 2020-15? If so, please unmute your microphone and state your name and address for the record. Hearing no one, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to proposed ordinance Hearing no one, are there any council members who wish to speak? If not, then I call for the question.
Question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Mamalenti?
That's all right. It's not a question, it's more of a comment. Brought back flashback childhood memories of years of misspent youth, riding my BMX bike on the, on the concrete back behind that building. So I'd be remiss to, to not mention that and bring back some memories. Good to see it get to use.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? My apologies for missing you first time around, Mr. Mamalenti.
You're right.
If none, then I will call for the question.
Question.
Madam Clerk, would you please poll the council?
Mrs. DeMaide?
Yes.
Mr. Benicki?
Yes.
Mr. Hazen?
Yes.
Mr. Mamalenti?
Yes.
Mr. Emmons?
Yes.
Mr. Belovich?
Yes.
Mr. Compton?
Yes.
Mrs. Volker?
Yes.
Mr. Hicksonbaum?
Yes.
Proposed ordinance passes 920.
Thank you. With that, we will move into privilege of the floor. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak with respect to non-agenda items only under privilege of the floor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Prince?
I didn't know where to come up and mention this because I forgot to mention it in the pre-meeting, so here I am. I distributed plans that the architect had forwarded for the new municipal services building, the former Liberty Mutual Building. I ask for responses back by Friday of this week. Please coordinate directly through Clerk Walk and Prince and Ball to have, or 10 different inputs there, so reducing that. Just appreciate your attention to the matter. The other thing I'll say is that we've officially discontinued our contract with Creston and Everett regarding the marketing of the building. So it is ours. It will be a municipal services building unless something else happens.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prince? He almost got away. Is it safe for us to assume then, Mr. Prince, that there wasn't any tangible bite, if you will, on the part of the market with regard to the property through Creston and Everett's efforts?
That is correct. I think they had two inquiries, and they were both, one was not near appropriate, and the other one was more of a speculative endeavor, which is we specifically didn't want somebody to come in and buy it and then market it themselves because they didn't have an idea what to do with the building.
Okay. Well, thank you. I appreciate you making the effort nonetheless.
Of course.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak under privilege of the floor? Hearing no one, we'll move into unfinished business, of which there is none, setting the stage for new business. Mr. Mayor, anything that you'd like to update us on with regard to COVID-19? All right.
Mr. President.
Mr. Compton?
Mayor, at the last meeting, I asked if we could be included in the emails that the hospitals put out. You were gonna look into that. Did you, did you find out anything on that? And could you tell us?
So I see them, but I'm not even included on their list, and I'm not getting them every day, although when I do get them, they have been very consistent. I'm sorry, Mr. President, Dave Wood, Mayor. So at least as far as the health system, which includes not just Michewaka but Plymouth and others, so they've been very consistent as far as the levels. We have not seen a, you know, massive spike. I did, through channels, reach out to see if we could get some of the numbers specific to the ZIP codes that you had mentioned. The Health Department did not give us those numbers. They gave us instead, as part of their reporting, they track ZIP codes almost based on a rate per 100,000, which is not actual cases, but it's based on how many people per 100,000 would, would have, would be positive. And so, based on that, we don't, the hotspots that they track, the two specific ZIP codes in Michewaka, 46544, 46545, both of which are, even go beyond Michewaka, we don't really show up on their hotspots. They did give us a number based on 100,000, and we were still in the thousands as far as, you know, cases. And it, like I said, it's a ratio, not, it was not specific positive cases.
I guess maybe I wasn't as clear as I should have been. What I was hoping to see is these emails, that we would have access to them, which gives regular, daily information updates in between council meetings, that kind of thing, as I understand. And was hoping that through your office, that you could ask was hoping that through your office, that you could ask if that's available to us and to yourself as well. I mean, I think that's information we would all appreciate seeing. It might be, you know, I'm sure it's very consistent, I'm sure it's very, you know, where it needs to be, or where we'd like it to be, but I'd still like to see that information, if that's available.
Okay.
If that's something you can do, I'd appreciate that.
I can ask the question, same as you can ask the question of the hospital.
Well, I'm not, I don't, I could, but I think coming from the mayor's office might have a little more weight, and I'm not sure who to contact. If you would prefer I do that, give me that, if you could tell me that information, I would be happy.
And they do have a community, a town hall meeting that they conduct through Zoom. That's a broad group. They've been doing it every two or three weeks or so, which includes universities and business spokes. You know, I can see if they would be willing to add you onto that as well, as far as their invite list.
That would be great, but again, I'm more interested in the regular updates that they give. As I said, I think, I'm not even sure, but I thought daily, is what I thought.
They do them daily. I don't necessarily get them daily. I, you know, I get updated as, from people who are part of more critical command structures, and so I'm aware of them. But I, like I said, I've not been getting them daily here recently either. But yeah, I can call them and ask.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Other than that, you know, we continue to respond bill processes. We've not seen a particular spike as a result of different, I would say, different, you know, holidays so far, be it Memorial Day, be it, you know, people outside with nicer weather here as far as our citizens are concerned. We have put together an internal group, and we know that there will be positive cases in the city, and we are preparing for that, prepared for that, as far as doing things to help out families and such. And so, it's just a matter of time before we have to activate that. And what does that look like for, say, you know, places of work, where people report to work and maybe work in close proximity with other coworkers? And so, we've developed those plans. We're doing temperature monitoring and public safety. We are, you know, if you notice fire responding fire trucks, even at stations, firefighters are wearing masks pretty much all the time. We've removed any seating where there might be close proximity. We've done things to really go above and beyond, and just make sure that the work environment is, accommodate social distancing to the best that we can accommodate it. And then, we've been really reiterating the need to maintain the social distancing. Sometimes in a, you know, say, a living quarters, you know, you tend to let your guard down, especially with your coworkers, and so we just are really trying to reinforce that.
Mr. MaMolenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the update. Last time, last meeting, you'd mentioned that at that point, we hadn't had any city employees test positive. Is that still the case?
We anticipate that we do have at this point in time. Not exactly, I'm sometimes not the first to know. This runs through our clinic. We have a very good doctor. She is working with some potential positives.
Other questions? And thank you again for the information. Sometimes even if there isn't a wealth of new information to share, it's just good to have reaffirmation of what it is that we're doing. To follow up in your comments with regard to, what sounds like a real possibility that we may encounter that with our own city employees, is there a formalized response plan that's been put together by your task force that, you know, could be shared with the council, just so that we'd have an idea of how it'll roll out once a city employee is diagnosed with COVID-19?
Well, if it's a public safety department, we have very specific protocols there. And so, they have developed procedures specific to public safety, and will, and, you know, have activated that. So, but what of that they can share, I can, you know.
If possible.
Yeah, we can do that. The other thing, other, I guess, worth updating is that the pool is closed. You might have seen for the entire season. That was a difficult decision, knowing that many of our citizens are, especially our kids, depend on the pool and look forward to summer swimming. A lot of teams look forward to using that facility, as well as just the public in general. It was a difficult decision. We felt like we couldn't really give a very good answer to the public about whether we could be open or whether we couldn't, depending, you know, things are still changing. We didn't know that the state had closed their pools. We knew that the capacity there would be limited, that we have amenities, that we just can't constantly keep disinfecting there, that, you know, would get a lot of touches. And so, also, we had lifeguards who have worked for us for many years. We wanted to let them know. We didn't feel like we could give them a yes, report to work, things are going to be normal. We knew we couldn't do that, but we did know that, you know, the likelihood of changing, or of something changing was pretty high. Also, you know, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars to start your pool, fill it up with water, hire your people, all of the utilities associated with it. And so, that was a gamble. And so, we just felt that, and with a abbreviated season that we would have had, we just felt that all things considered, it was best just to close the pool for this year, and so we made that decision. Splash pads will open, I believe, on July, or June the 14th. And so we anticipate at least some of them, not all of them, will be open.
Mr. Emmens?
How are you planning on distancing with the splash pad, with the pool being open, and congregating on a splash pad and disinfecting the splash pad? What kind of procedures are you going to follow on that?
Well, the CDC has essentially said that disinfection of playgrounds was not recommended, just because if you can disinfect it now, somebody can come and touch it, and so you pretty much have to disinfect it after every single touch. So, it's just not practical. So, splash pads, especially the one at Central, is chlorinated, and so they're treated kind of like a playground, but, you know, we will not be disinfecting our splash pads. Just, we don't have it, we don't have the ability to just continually disinfect, disinfect, disinfect all day long after every.
You don't have to have any social distancing?
Well, yeah, there's, you know, there's supposed to be social distancing at grounds and splash pads and you name it, and we rely on our public to, you know, to heed those recommendations and make those decisions. You know, we can't be out there to police every single interaction at every single park, but we do know that our citizens want amenities that we have. We think we can open the parks, you know, as safely as possible. Other parks in the area will be open. I think other pools in the area will be open. Ours just will not be. So, so those amenities are opening here in Mishawaka and elsewhere, fireworks is another decision, another tough one. Mishawaka loves fireworks. We don't know that we can, Mishawaka gets a lot of people at fireworks, in case you have not noticed. You know, it's nothing for us to get maybe 10, 15,000 people in very close proximity. We don't know that we can do that safely. Plus, the fact that no other community around here is hosting fireworks means that we potentially get more people into Mishawaka. And so, how do we accommodate that? You know, everything's about public safety here in Mishawaka. We've consulted with our police and our fire departments, and we just don't feel like we can do that safely at this point in time. We have not made the final decision, but we think that we're headed towards a no-go on fireworks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmens. Other questions for his honor?
Couple follow-ups. What it's worth, I certainly support the decision with regard to Merrifield, and as tough as it may be, but under the circumstances, it makes a lot of sense. I will also share with you that we have one other thing in common. I saw your social media post with regard to jumping off the platforms many years ago, and I also had a one-time experience with that, and I'm happy never to do that again, but.
It was you I was with at 4:00 in the morning.
Moving on. One other follow-up, and piggybacks in your interaction with Mr. Compton. I did participate in the last Zoom webinar opportunity that St. Joseph Regional Medical Center put on, and have asked if that invitation can be extended to all of us, just so that everyone can receive what I found to be very valuable information. And it certainly was a balanced presentation. It was not all doom and gloom, but I think it's a fair summary to say that there was a measure of caution that was expressed by the healthcare professionals affiliated with the hospital, that we have to continue to be vigilant, we have to observe social distancing, the wearing of masks, the other things that allow us to work through this. So, if possible, I'd like to see all of us at least have an opportunity to see the recordings of those, and I'll work with the hospital as well to see if that can happen.
Thank you. They do share the same information that I have seen come through, you know, some of our command committees and such. So, yeah, that is informative. And we've been encouraged that the hospital's not been overrun with patients. The hospital is by and large open and available and ready for, you know, and they are opening up to more routine, regular kinds of service. Flattening the curve was always meant to keep people out of the hospital, and it has worked. It is still working. Our citizens have responded well, and I think continue to respond well. We've, I think, managed to open, from what I observe, and of course, I mean, we're not out to police it so much, but, you know, by and large, people are wearing masks or social distancing, or in some cases, both. We've received, we've taken shipment of masks here, thousands of them. We've made those available to the Mishawaka Food Pantry, so that if, you know, masks become a barrier to, say, go seek healthcare, or go to the grocery shop to get food for your families, we don't want that to be a barrier. So, we've donated masks to them so that they can hand them out. So, just, you know, it's, like I said, from the last update a couple weeks ago, fairly status quo here, and as far as our citizens are concerned, and we ask they continue to do the good things they've been doing.
Since we have you, if I can shift gears slightly, undoubtedly, we all observed over the weekend and prior in the week, the unrest across the country. And, you know, thankfully, we haven't seen that here in Mishawaka. Is there anything that you can share with us with regard to any special preparations that we've made, or are we in good shape just with our standard procedures and staffing that we have in place to be able to address anything that might occur in Mishawaka?
Well, as you see across the country, where, you know, hundreds of thousands of people can accumulate, we are prepared as best we can, but we're a small department, so we would rely heavily on, say, the Indiana State Police, but, and other agencies, neighboring agencies, as we assist them, they also assist us. We are as prepared as we can be. We have equipment that we've received during other, you know, other national events. You know, we've applied for grants and received some of that. We do have some equipment that we do have. We also have, you know, we're vigilant right now. Our police force is very vigilant on looking for not just activity in and around. We have a retail area that might, you know, seem attractive for looting. So, we had an incident yesterday that you might have seen on the news, but very quick response because we're up in the area with a couple of different task forces and different things. And so, we continue to monitor that. We continue to monitor things such as, you know, social media, to look out, to see. A lot of times, word will go out there, we'll try to intercept it there, and be prepared as we can be. There was also some reports out there that businesses were ordered to close by the police department, and there was a curfew in place. That was not accurate. I did not institute a curfew, and the Mishawaka Police Department did not order any business closed. In some cases, businesses just decided on their own that, you know what, if there's any risk, we're just going to close down, get the people out of here. So, that was the case.
Thank you. Any other questions from our wood? Thank you, sir. Is there any other new business to come before the council? Mrs. DeMaide?
Mr. President, we all know tomorrow is Election Day, and I would like to thank Mrs. Volker for taking her entire day tomorrow to work the polls. This is her first time working the polls, and good luck. Have fun.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. MaMolenti?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you mentioned previously, or quickly in our pre-meeting, I attempted the first remote neighborhood watch meeting via Zoom last month, or this past month, and I thought it was very, very successful. The people that attended found it very user-friendly, easy to use. Mr. Hicksonbaugh and Mrs. DeMaide were in present. I'm not sure if they're out of town, but I think it went over so well that they would prefer to do it again in June, and that will be June 14th via Zoom, and we're still working on a speaker as well. But as Mr. Hicksonbaugh had mentioned, the time limit for the free version is 40 minutes, and I had, I did not think that we'd even come close to that, but we ended up having to disconnect and restart another meeting. It was well. So, again, it was very easy. Thank you, Hicksonbaugh, for joining us. All are welcome on June 14th, public council.
Sunday, June 14th.
Should be Wednesday.
Sunday is June 14th.
Should be 17th. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, June 17th, 7 o'clock. Will be Zoom. I will send out the meeting details and password as we get closer to that date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. MaMolenti, do you deliver, then, did you deliver the dessert or treat?
I typically just kind of eat it in front of them, so they know, maybe they can get an idea.
That's great. Thank you.
But if you would be willing to deliver, I'll give you some address. So, thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Any other new business? Folks, it's good to be back together in the same room once again. For those who are viewing this electronically in real time or later, you may start to see around town some of these attractive Mishawaka High School face masks that the athletic department is selling as a fundraising slash community service project. Council members may be wearing them in the future as well, but I would encourage all to visit, to contact the Mishawaka High School and help them with their fundraising. With that, if there's no other new business to come before the council, a motion to adjourn is in order. Meeting adjourned. Thank you.